City Council early work session. Today is Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, and it is 6:00 PM. We are going to, number one, receive presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Oh, and I must be psychic, but. Wow, habits are old habits hard to break.
Yeah.
Heather.
First day on the hot seat. What was I saying, Dave, you?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. We have finished another year of our audit, and that brings a lot of joy to the finance department. You know, we spend a lot of time and do a lot of work, but we also share some of the work with the other departments. They're all, you know, responsible for purchasing, and there's some departments that do some cash collections, and all of that included in this whole audit. So I just want to take a few minutes to, you know, show my appreciation to everyone, you know, following our policies and our procedures. Help us get an unmodified opinion, you know, to use to say this, so it's very important, and I'm grateful for that. And also want to express some appreciation to the Patilla Brown and Hill, our audit firm, their audit team. They're always professional, respectful of our time, and they're really great at giving insight and guidance on new coming standards that's come out throughout the year. So we really appreciate that as well. And also want to thank Jacob in particular for coming all the way from Waco to present the annual comprehensive financial report tonight. He's also going to show, present the audit, or the single audit report. So please, Jacob.
Should I go up here or stand right here?
Up here if you like.
Evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me this evening. Like she said, I'm Jacob Bowman, I'm an audit supervisor with Patilla Brown and Hill out of Waco. I've gone here early to beat the traffic, trying to drive in a little early, because you know how it goes. So here today to present the results of our audit, although Heather spoiled it a little bit, which is a good thing. It's a good news all around. I'm also here to present the annual comprehensive financial report, which you'll have a copy in front of you. It's the thick report that's bound with the spiral and the single audit as well. So as you know, every year, cities, counties, schools, every type of local government has to receive an audit from an outside CPA firm to make sure they're following right accounting principles, being complying with laws and regulations, federal guidance, stuff like that. And so every year, Heather and her team get their books and start auditing to determine whether the cities, you know, following generally accept the accounting principles. We do a lot of procedures, some of them are high-level analysis, some of them are confirming directly with entities. For example, cash, all of the cash on your balance sheet, we confirm directly with the banks, make sure it's accurate. In addition to that, we're looking at internal controls over cash receipts, you know, cash dispersments. Like Heather alluded to, we're talking to a variety of offices to determine, does the city have strong controls over money and financial reporting? And so in addition to the clean opinion they received, you know, with the clean set of books, they'll also, it's not technically called an opinion, but further in the single audit report, we have a section that talks about internal control. We are happy to say that we found no internal control deficiencies, no issues. Again, I want to, you know, reiterate or mention that we're not looking at every penny, not as hard enough, especially all the things we request. So we have a scope, of course, in terms of materiality, but everything we did test and come across, I think of no, no non-compliance, no issues or question costs there. And the other, I guess you could say, opinion in addition to the financial statements and internal control is what we call the uniform guidance opinion, where it's essentially the single audit opinion. So I'm going to allude to that real quick and then take a break to kind of go back to the annual comprehensive financial report to look at some financial metrics. So I'm going to skip real fast to the single audit report. It's the more small bound report y'all have. So our local governments that receive, or spend over $750,000 of federal money, which y'all did, y'all have for the last few years now. The outside CPA firm has to do a single audit, is what they call it. It's essentially a really in-depth audit over the granted questions. And so with y'all, last few years, there's been ARPA, the COVID funding. I think as of September 30th, 2024, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's fully spent out now.
It is, yes. We all prepared it and spent it in May 2024.
Good, yeah. So we tested that one this year, and I think that will be the last time we test it, you know, God forbid another pandemic. But in terms of the ARPA, we tested it one more final time. You'll see on page six of the single audit report, that's the list of all the city's federal grants, and it really comprises of the Bulletproof Best Partnership and a whole lot of ARPA. So we're anticipating that next year or 24, 25, there may not be a single audit at all, you know, depending on what federal funding gets spent. So we're happy to report on the ARPA, where we test a significant more transactions, more in-depth level than the other part of the audit. No issues, no non-compliance, and it's definitely a challenge keeping up with the federal rules. I know they kind of settled on it after a while, but the first few years of ARPA, the rules of what you couldn't do were up in the air. So there were a lot of discussions and people having to learn across the country, but working with Heather and her team, we came across no issues there in terms of federal compliance. So really happy to report that. I guess I'll move back to the annual comprehensive financial report just to highlight a few, I think, as financial pieces. I'm going to be turning myself to page 58, just to take a look at general fund. General fund's, I suppose, the biggest fund in the city and really important. We all have at year-end, around 11, this is as of September 30th, 2024, I mentioned that. At that point in time, the general fund did have a hair over 11.6 million of fund balance. If we're to really figure out how much of that is available to be spent, I guess unrestricted, or what kind of cushion is there? We like to hone in on the unassigned piece of general fund fund balance, which won't be present on that page, but it's about 9.3 million. We think about, okay, how much reserves is that in terms of a year's worth of spending on average? About 38% reserves in general fund, unassigned reserves. I did read, I think in the budget, that y'all look for about 20 to 25% at least. And the Governmental Finance Officers Association, they advise at least 30%. So y'all are at 38%, which is good, above GFOA's threshold, but not, you know, too high in the clouds either, so. Good news there, and also the general fund came in under budget as a whole in terms of the expenditures, and actually added to fund balance a year-end. I believe that the final amended budget projected a deficit a year-end, but in actuality, it became an, you know, had income of about 1.2 million. For the general fund, I can only speak for so much, but it appears in good health. Of course, this is also a comparison to other cities your size as well, I can say that, it's in good health. Another rather important fund is the utility fund. Like the general fund, it's healthy as well. I'm going to be looking at page 31 now, actually, for the utility fund. Roll water activity there has about 75% of a year's worth of unrestricted fund balance. This may be a little into weeds, but the utility fund uses a slightly different version of accounting principles than the general fund and the governmental funds. So it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison with the general fund. Having 75% worth of fund balance after taking out debt and capital assets is really healthy. Every year, there seems to be positive operating cash flow. I think a few pages to the right, you'll see the statement of cash flows. To kind of, I guess, look past some of the accrual basis accounting, which can sometimes be a little bit challenging, comprehend, it still is for me. I think a cash flow kind of basis helps, you know, show what money, what actual money is coming in and going out. And the utility fund is able to subsidize capital improvements and planned spending because it earns money every year consistently. Sounds a good thing to see as well, especially now that the ARPA spending is over and there's not necessarily a federal cushion to subsidize some of that. Utility fund seems healthy. So good news there as well. Something I want to just reference, I'm not going to go too much into it, but I think it's helpful just for all of y'all and just the citizens and whoever in the community that uses are. This management discussion and analysis, kind of going way back to the front of the report. This will be page four, actually, is the very beginning of ACFR. I guess you could say this is a summary of what's been going on in terms of the different funds at the city, how they're performing, the money coming in, going out, what big projects are going on, what things have been spent on, what reserves are there, why did revenue go up and down, why did these expenditures go up and down? So take some time reading through that, I think is helpful to kind of gain a picture, particularly a year-over-year picture of the city. We want to kind of look more broadly, like, you know, how was the city performing from a 10-year basis, maybe? On the complete polar opposite of the ACFR, the way in the back are 10-year schedules in the statistical section. I think that page 91 and 92 kind of paints a picture of the city's governmental funds. And by the way, this page excludes utility funds, this is only a general fund, all but special revenue and grant funds here. Just to kind of see how have revenues done the last 10 years, how have expenditures done, how is fund balance looking? How much of our budget is spent on debt service, on principal interest payments for bonds and leases? So you can tell revenues have consistently increased over time, ARPA taxes, sales taxes, charges for services, but of course, as expected, expenditures increase with that. So with both of those being the case, fund balance in turn remains pretty steady, broadly speaking for all the governmental funds, which is good. In the very, very bottom, I like this ratio here. Debt service as a percentage of non-capital expenditures, the Governmental Finance Officers Association loves this ratio. They mention it a lot in their review comments on the ACFR. I think it's kind of helpful, it shows you how much of the governmental fund's budget, apart from capital spending, is related to paying down bonds and, you know, as the city owes. So it seems pretty consistent hovering around 13%, and that's pretty average, to be honest. In the cities, the all size that I see, it's pretty average, I would say about 13%. I find that, personally find these tables a little bit interesting, especially the tables in the back, there's all sorts of ratios and things pertaining to the health of this city, the demographics of this city. Just out of curiosity, I like reading through these sometimes, so I think it'd be helpful for all of y'all to look at. And I think that hits the highlights of the kind of financial piece I wanted to look at and present to you all this evening. Just to summarize, clean opinions across the board in every regard, it's been that way for many years. Heather and her team do a fantastic job, I want to reiterate that. I'll have a very clean set of books that is very easy to audit, so y'all make it easier on us. We ask for lots of documentation, she can attest to that. So the finance team and of course, all the other offices doing their regular, normal job in addition to all the requests we have for a few months speaks to a lot, and we appreciate it. They're very easy to work with, and every year the audit goes, I think, rather smooth. So I appreciate all y'all's help at this time. I want to open it up to any questions y'all may have on the scope of the audit, the results of our audit, any financial information within. I can, of course, do my best to explain some of that, may have to defer to Heather, but of course, want to open it up that at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
I have one that's really trivial, more of a Scott question. Why is storm sewers under wastewater? Just asking, on page 110.
I didn't hear what you said.
On page 110, it has all of our assets and storm sewers are under wastewater, and I was just wondering why I've never, that's, we don't live on the East Coast, so I was wondering why it was put there, that's all.
It was set up as a, it's similar to enterprise, but.
Okay, I just, again, I just, it's odd, that's.
Okay. Those sorts of cool information back there.
You have a typo though, not really, 96 is one, it should be 96, just letting you know. I've read this, Jacob, I mean, I'm the only good.
Said paid for 96?
Yeah, it's 95, it goes to one, it should be 96, that's all.
You are totally right about that.
So y'all, I mean, if that's the only thing we see, you did awesome.
That's right. I tell myself every year I'll get done presenting one of these and I'll swear I'm never going to look at the report again because I always find typos or something. It's a beefy report, lots of information, lots of, they're built out of Word and Excel files, so. Bound to be a few of those. I think before we do our submission to GFOA, Heather, we can get that page number corrected.
I love the tables, I think it's great because every year you can compare, and I really like, it's nerdy, the quantities of all of our infrastructure, I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah, those statistical tables in the back are optional. If a city or a county or any local government wants to do what's formerly called an annual comprehensive financial report and thereby get it reviewed by the GFOA, all of these tables are required in the back. There's lots of information in these tables, and a lot of departments have to gather it together, so it's a big ask to add these tables, but there is a lot of helpful information. Anytime I'm online, just wanted to learn about a city, I'll probably skip to these tables, to be honest, that's just me there.
Anybody else have any questions?
What is, on 91, what is issuance of leases?
I'm sorry?
Issuance of leases, 91, or other financing sources?
This is where we get into the murky waters of governmental accounting. So in governmental accounting, if a governmental fund issues debt, a lease, a bond, any category of debt, you actually have to show a revenue, it's not really a revenue, but it's a non-cash of them entering into a lease agreement. That dollar amount represents the present value of all of the lease payments for the whole agreement. And then the other side of the journal entry would be a capital outlay account. So we hit an expenditure account representative of the whole present value of the entire payments for the lease, and you, the credit of that entry is the proceeds from leases. It's a non-cash entry, it does not affect fund balance.
And releasing.
Was that?
I totally, this is.
Probably tied to the fleet.
So we can actually highlight that.
Just the fleet, okay.
Oh, yep.
Okay.
Page 48 will show that.
I'd rather do calculus than finance math any day of the week, so.
So y'all, I came out of school only knowing full profit accounting, and now it's the reverse, where all I know is governmental accounting, and I forgot.
Give me calculus, you can have that.
Has its, you know, different elements. I guess it's mainly governmental accounting to like, look at an entity from a year's worth perspective. There are some statements in the report, mainly the statement of deposition, which is on page 19 and 20. This shows the, what we call a full accrual methodology of accounting. That lease issuance account, and these accounts are called a capital outlay. Those are distinct categories of accounts only in governmental funds. Governmental funds, including general fund, are not allowed to show capital assets, show long-term debt. We have to use accounts that, expenditure and revenue accounts, that symbolize capital assets and long-term debt. And we convert that method of accounting, that fund level accounting, we call it modified accrual, and we convert it to full accrual, like a company's, how their accounting would be, where you have all the capital assets and all the debt on the balance sheet. So pages 19 and 20 versus pages 23 and 24, they're kind of the same thing in a way, they just use a different method of accounting. Governmental fund accounting basis again is more taking a look at the city's health from a year's worth of activity. With the statements on the, on the statement deposition on page 19 and 20, that's kind of looking at, or the city's health, sorry, the city's health as a whole since its existence. So slight differences there. I remember when I started learning governmental accounting, a lot of it was, what's going on here? But that's why they include the different types of statements in this report. Hopefully that long-winded way of explaining it helped a little bit. Want to open it up to any other questions.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Mayor just mentioned there is an item with the consent agenda to accept the audit, and I also want to compliment Heather and her team. Heather's always been in charge of the audit, and now she gets the added bonus of going directly into being in charge of budget right after. So, but her and her team did a great job, the directors had to put information together for this, really doing outstanding jobs.
It's always good to get this, this awesome report.
It's always good to work with y'all, y'all do a really good job, I just saw it quite easy on this, so. Very much appreciated, especially during the busy time of year, so.
You know, it's just hard work on us.
Especially Heather and her team, I know, it doesn't turn on it, and it takes a lot, so.
And we appreciate you being here and presenting it.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody what? We are, right now, we, yeah.
Sure did.
I did, I got the nerd salary of the night.
I personally liked that, the part at the very front about talking about the city and how, I love that. The numbers, yeah. Somebody else, that's somebody else's job.
Thank you all again.
Thank you. That's always good news, and you're always sweating bullets, you just don't know.
It's good to be boring, you want to be boring for an audit, it's good to be boring.
Exactly, especially this time of year. Okay, all right, well, we got through that, and no other comments on that. Clarification of consent or action items on today's city council meeting agenda. Does anybody have any questions, comments? So I asked Paul earlier about number 12, the FM 2499 corridor maintenance services, and if that was strictly for 2499, if it didn't, you know, Phil, ask everybody else.
Yeah, Phil, I'll let you explain a little bit of the difference between that contract and the other mowing that we do, you know.
Yeah, so we, we did have another mowing contract, but if you remember, we brought that in-house because we were having service issues, and they would take care of the trails and razzes. So the only mowing contract that we have right now is on 2499, and that's what this is for.
So it's just mowing, it's on?
Mowing, picking up trash, weed eating, edging, blowing, pruning, mulching, irrigation, repair. We have some stuff in there that if, if we have a big repair job and we need some help, there's a provision in there for them to give us an hourly rate to do work in other parts of the city.
Do they replace all the stuff that's nired?
Work cost, yes, yes.
But that's not part of this?
No. But there, there are pricing, there is pricing in there to replace plants.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was curious about number 11, I don't remember this coming up before, so I wanted to get a discussion about the ambulance, if you don't mind, please.
Yeah, so identified in our replacement schedule was our second ambulance, to try to keep that at or under eight years is, is the typical. And so our current ambulance is, the one that will be replaced is in 2019, currently it's about a two-year build-up. And so trying to forecast that out to get to 27. And that was identified also in the current, the current tax.
The tax note.
The tax note.
Okay, thank you.
446,000. That was a question, only 446,000, I asked that question too, I was early.
I asked that. Used to give an engine for that.
Some towns are getting killer trucks.
Killer trucks, but not us. I saw some, we got some fancy ones compared to, we were driving to, through Tawakani, East Tawakani, and there was a fire on the bridge. They've got the little bitty, older fire truck. I was like, oh, look, Arthur, we got good ones.
Okay, Council, anybody else have? And so the, this, the, receive the annual comprehensive, that's on the consent also, so nobody wants to move anything around.
No, there's only two on actions.
There's only two on action. And then?
No, you can site plan, and then 16 and 17 are action.
Right. Okay. That's it, then we are going closed session. So it's 6:25. We're in a closed session for section 551.071, consultation with city attorney concerning any or contemplated litigation. Any regular session or work session agenda item, and section 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding contemplated litigation. And section 551.071, consultation with city attorney regarding contemplated litigation relating to a claim made by Joel Kraus. And the time is 6:25.
Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is March 25th, it is 7:00 PM. And call the meeting to order, let the record show all the council members are present. We are going to get started with prayer led by Councilmember Robert Feaster and then he's also going to lead us in our pledges.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our families, our health and our well-being. As we gather here tonight, we pray and ask for your wisdom and guidance as we consider this evening's agenda. We ask that you guide us so we may continue to serve in good faith towards each other and represent the best of our community's interests. We ask that you continue to watch over our city staff, our first responders, and see them safely home to their families at the end of their day. And we pray you watch over and protect our military personnel at home and abroad and keep them safe as they serve to protect us. In your most blessed name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. So I have a, I have a computer screen like everybody else up here, this is the first time in years. And I don't know whether to look at my paper here in front of me or to look at this, so if you see me going, oh dear, you'll understand why. It's just really different to be like the rest of them up here, so. We are going to move on to mayor and council reports of items, community interest. Council, does anybody have anything?
I'd just like to remind everyone that the McAuliffe Elementary Chili Cook-Off is in two days and we're praying no rain, no rain, but it's going to start with the first parade at 4:45. And then at 5 o'clock, the rides open, so there's bounce houses for the kids. At 5:45, there's going to be a pig drop. So if you haven't seen a pig drop, helicopter's going to come in and drop pigs, 2,000 pigs. It's a lottery, again fundraiser for the school. And they're going until 8:00 PM. And then chili tasting and there will be a car show. So it's a big event supporting Highland Village Elementary, I mean McAuliffe and now Highland Village Elementary, which is joining this year. So that's this Thursday starting at 4:45.
Perfect. And they're plastic pigs, people, they're not, they're not real pigs. Make sure we are not, don't think they're going to be dropping real pigs out of a, out of a helicopter. Anybody else, council, does anybody else have anything? No, all right, well then, I do, actually. I am going to do proclamations for Child Abuse Prevention Month, April is the Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I have a couple of them. Jennifer, you want to join me? I'm going to take the big, big letters and you're going to take the small one. Well, good night. Okay, you hold this one. Perfect, thank you. I need two more extra hands. Okay, so, whereas there were 577 children affected by abuse and neglect served by CASA of Denton County in 2024, and whereas more than 204 volunteers from Denton County work with the organization and have given 20,679 annual service hours for their time and driven 217,982 miles to ensure safety for our community's children, and whereas our youngest citizens guidance and protection. Now therefore I, in honor of all the children in Denton County, I, Charlotte Wilcox, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Highland Village, and commend the work of CASA of Denton County volunteers and staff in advocating children during this difficult time in their lives. So thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate you. Would you like to say something?
I would.
Okay.
Thank you for having CASA of Denton County at this meeting today. I'm Jen Adame, and I am the Community Engagement Specialist with CASA. Each year Denton County provides critical advocacy for over 570 children who have experienced abuse and neglect. I've given you those pins that are, it's gone out of my head, little pinwheels. I was going to say windmills. I was like, that is not what I gave you. Those, just try to remind people that that's how children's lives should be, light and happy, and, you know, they should, they should have that time. So that's why that symbolizes Child Abuse Prevention Month. We encourage community members to volunteer as CASA advocates. We're actually in a crisis right now and have 70 CASA kids who don't have designated advocates. It's the supervisors taking on those cases. And we continue to ensure that every child who needs our services has CASA. Together, we will be one step closer to ensuring that every Denton County child has a safe and loving home. So thank you. Two children from Highland Village were helped last year at CASA, but like I said, there were over 570 that we gave advocacy to in Denton County. So thank you for recognizing that. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for what you do.
If I don't, I get in trouble. I'm sorry? Oh, absolutely. Yeah, for sure. Oh, no. Where's Lori? Somebody, Lori? Oh, Phil?
Social media person.
Right. Does this look dumb?
No, no, no. You're good.
All right. Ready on three. One, two, three.
Can you do that higher, please, and make us look down? Yeah, higher. Up here.
Bill, have your daughters not taught you anything?
They don't let me take pictures.
And I appreciate you. Okay. And now we have Lorraine Perry and Theresa Shelton. I'm trying to get my rock star microphone back on. Y'all come right up here. Thank y'all for coming out. I'm going to give you the pretty one. And I'm going to, I'm going to read this one. Okay. All right. Are you ready? Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Denton County, and whereas in 2024 Denton County Child Protective Services received 8,104 reports of child abuse, and of those, 5,600 were assigned to caseworkers. And whereas in 2024 Denton County Child Protective Services had an average of 293 children in its protective custody, and whereas Denton County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social services, agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month offers us all an opportunity to promote and support programs that offer protection and safety for our community's children. Now therefore I, Charlotte Wilcox, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, in honor of all the children in Denton County, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 Child Abuse Prevention Month in Highland Village. Thank you so much. We appreciate all, both organizations do, but we really, we really appreciate y'all. Lorraine, you want to say something?
I guess I can say anything.
Well, I'll scoot over here.
Yeah.
Oh, are we going to do a picture first? Okay. Get in here in the middle. Right there. Go high, so we look, yeah.
You got to open my phone.
Wait, she's, it's not open. It's not, it's like, yeah, there we go.
There we go. I was like, I can't see anything. We were not raised with these things. We're not scared.
There we go.
There we go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hopefully one of those is good.
Okay. Lorraine, you go ahead and.
First, I'd like to thank my mayor and our city council for each year doing this, and I hope there come a time that we don't have to do this anymore. Being raised in foster care in Florida is, gives me a great joy to get out and work with these kids to make sure they don't go through some of the things that I went through growing up. And I pray each day that these children will grow up and be better than I am, and I've done very well after serving 20 years in the Marine Corps and as an, and coming out into this world in civilian life and doing a daycare center for 30 years. And I just want to say that each day that people in this community work with our children to groom them and let them know that they are loved, each day means a lot to them. And right now, we're, like she said, from the CASA, we're going through a crisis now. We're getting five and six children per family coming in. We have a bed shortage. We're just going through so much right now. We don't know what it is. But I just pray and I thank people like in this community and throughout Denton County for the work that they do and for the support, for giving out their money and all of that. I just really appreciate the people that work directly with us and help us, and I just want to continue to thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate y'all. Oh, we have present. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass one down. Pass it down, yeah.
Do we have any links on our website for places people to volunteer, like at these different organizations?
I don't know. That's a good question. Lori?
I would be happy to send, I do share things with her after the Highland Village breakfast, but I would be happy to send the information through session card to.
Okay. Send it to Lori, yeah.
Yeah, we do these proclamations on these wonderful organizations. If we had like a volunteer tab, it might get more people, they can, oh, look, and go see it.
Lorraine and I are both on the board of an organization called Community Partners of Denton County. What I was, what our organization does is total donation and volunteer, and when a child is removed from the home, or occasionally if we're trying to keep a child in the home and parents need some help, we provide anywhere from a diaper to a bed and everything in between, clothing, shoes, underwear, anything that child might need to live their life, you know, in a normal manner. Community partners provide.
Fund. So if you can send that information maybe to Lori Mullins of the city, and then, you know, maybe we could put something on the, a link or something on the website. I think that's a good idea. So, all right. Thank you. Okay. We are going to do city manager and staff reports.
Mayor, thank you. And I do have a few items. I'm going to start with everyone's favorite topic, water disinfectant conversion. I was hoping I was going to get some laughs. The now annual disinfectant conversion began March 19th, and it will conclude on April 9th. During this conversion, we temporarily convert the disinfectant used in the distribution system from chloramine to free chlorine. In order to convert the disinfectant, the city has discontinued the use of surface water from the Upper Trinity Regional Water District and is only using groundwater from the city's water wells. You will experience aesthetic changes such as taste, odor, and feel of the water coming out of your faucets, which is associated with the conversion process, as well as only using the groundwater as the primary source of water. City crews will rigorously flush, test, and monitor the water daily throughout the process to ensure the water meets TCEQ requirements. The reason the city does this annual conversion is to maintain the mandated disinfectant residual levels, red pipes of organic biofilm, and improve the overall conservation and quality of city water during the hotter months of the year. Previous to this conversion, when disinfectant levels dropped, particularly in the summer months, our utilities division flushed water through fire hydrants to bring fresh water into the distribution pipe network. This process required significant time, resources, and manpower, often dumping millions of gallons of potable water each summer during peak water demand times. Additionally, flushing alone does not eliminate biofilm, and it will regrow after the flush. Chlorine is more effective than chloramines in preventing biofilm buildup. Highland Village can easily do this by temporarily switching from the Upper Trinity surface water to the city-owned groundwater wells and making the conversion process extremely efficient. After the conversion last year, we saw dramatic improvements in water quality, a significant reduction in the need for flushing of potable water, and enhanced water conservation. We have heard from some residents who are using home test kits about the total dissolved solids, which are comprised of intergranic salts, principally calcium, magnesium, potassium, sodium bicarbonates, chlorides, and sulfites, and some small amounts of organic matter that are dissolved in water. The TCEQ does not regulate total dissolved solids, but they are monitored every three years. Highland Village's TDS results from the last analysis conducted by a TCEQ third-party lab in July of 2023 ranged from 400 parts per million to 798 parts per million. This information is found in the annual water quality report that is mailed to every household and available on the city website. For some other information, we just had our first meeting last week with our consultant half associates on the FM 407 Trail Alignment Assessment and Grant Funding Project to gather information and prepare content for our boards and commissions in public review and feedback. The scope of this project is analyze potential trail routes and provide a preferred trail alignment and grant funding strategies to help position us for the best chances of grant success. The purpose of this trail is to provide active transportation connections to connect residents and trail users to places of businesses, schools, adjacent communities, and parks. We will continue to inform you as we all move through the process. The city has earned the platinum level recognition by the American Heart Association Workforce Wellbeing Scorecard Program. This national designation recognizes organizations that foster a culture of health and well-being for their employees. The platinum level is the highest score given, and only 13% of all organizations achieve this high score. This is a credit to the council's support of our employees and our wellness initiatives. And a few upcoming events. Paper shredding day is scheduled for Saturday, April 5th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Pilot Knoll Park, and this is a free event for Highland Village residents. The annual Easter egg hunt is scheduled for April 12th at Unity Park. The hunt begins promptly at 10:00 AM. And April 8th is the next HVBA luncheon. This event will take place at Doubletree Ranch Park and will feature a presentation from Special Olympics of Texas. You can register for the luncheon at the dhvba.com. And one last one. The Highland Village Rotary Club will be presenting the Taste Around the Village, and that's going to be Friday, April 4th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at the shops. Area restaurants will, will serve food. Tickets are $50. This is a fundraiser for the City of Highland Village Animal Shelter, communities and schools, and Cumberland Youth and Family Services. And if you attended last year, you know it was a great time. So hopefully you can sign up, and you can go to hvroday.org for that information.
Perfect. Thank you.
And after that, Mayor, we do have a teen bonfire bash recap.
Good. I'm excited to get this. Oh, I really am.
Well, as you know, we finished up our comprehensive master plan. It was adopted in 2023, and with that plan, specifically Parks and Recreation, they identified some areas that we can do some bolstering up in. And one of them was providing team programming. So understanding that, the team, recreation team, got together, and we put together an event that would allow teenagers to come in and, if you will, design their own event. That happened on December 4th, and we got a lot of suggestions and narrowed it down to the top two. And the number one thing that the teens wanted was a bonfire. So immediately after that, our team again got together with police and with fire and with marketing, and we started developing what a bonfire would look like in Highland Village. Well, that came out to be something better than we could have expected. So with all the planning and everything that went along with that, on March 7th, Friday, we had our first teen bonfire event, and the success was tremendous. We didn't know who would turn out, and we had approximately 100 teens.
Wow.
That showed up to this event.
Wow.
The event consisted of hayrides, smores, different types of games that were out there, and just engagement with staff, and of course, Harney and Ben, and who doesn't like engaging with them. We just had a tremendous time. It was an excellent event, and we are going to continue this. And the only thing is, is we're going to move it to Doubletree. And we saw the success there, and we said, okay, if we're getting this many teens, we can actually step it up a little bit and have different offerings at Doubletree that we wouldn't have a copper's branch.
You're going to have bonfire at Doubletree?
Yes. Absolutely.
On the grand lawn?
No. Yeah. In the, in the roundabout, in the, where the Christmas tree typically goes, right there.
Oh, okay.
Yep. That earth is compacted, and it doesn't do well, so it's a perfect spot for it.
Okay.
And we're thinking about having a game room in the barn, something like that, and MC and music, and so it's going to.
That's good.
Yeah, we're excited about that. So it was a collaborative effort, like I said, with police, fire, and marketing. Couldn't done it without them, and it turned out to be exceptionally well done. So we have a little video here, and then I'll, if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
That's awesome.
And I felt to mention, I do want to give a special thank you to the mayor. She did something exceptionally well that night.
I didn't, I didn't attend, people. I didn't.
She didn't attend. But it wouldn't have happened and had such a, the effect that it did if it wasn't for your involvement. Thank you on behalf of the Parks Department for your involvement in it. Appreciate it.
Was that about the number of kids that you expected?
Oh, no. Not at all. We had, we had approximately 20 that showed up to 22 for the engagement. So we're saying, okay, this is a kind of a sample representation of what we can expect moving forward, but because it was identified, we felt that we needed to do something, and we have money set aside for new programs just like this. So we really didn't have any idea. And also Ben and, and Harney, the same thing. They were like, okay, we can get, you know, 10, or we can get 50, or, and wow, we were, we were pleasantly happy.
Mostly young teens?
Yeah, mostly young teens. Yeah. So when we move it to Doubletree, I think we're going to try to attract older teens. And one of the things that were, that was suggested, actually from Park Board, and then also Harney confirmed this because his daughter plays volleyball, is to have some type of a grass bash volleyball. So we'll, we'll be able to attract some of the older teens.
That's good.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Good job.
That is a great job. Yeah. And all I did was make a phone call, people. That's it. I didn't, I didn't do anything. I didn't start the fire or nothing. I just made a phone call. So, all right, well, we're going to move on, and we're going to have visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. In accordance with Texas Meeting Act, city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. So do we have any? Oh, wow, handouts.
No.
Okay.
These are for the last, for the last speaker.
Okay. All right. So the last one. Diane Beck. So if you will come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Where's the countdown clock?
I'm sorry?
The countdown clock? You say you have three minutes?
You have three minutes.
Yeah, where's the clock?
Well, what happens is.
Oh, I see. It's right there.
I have a, I have a timer up here, and.
No, it's one right here.
You go over, I have a button up here that I push, and the floor underneath you opens up, and you go out.
Yeah, like it's a Wonderful Life.
And you're going to pay respects to our veterans memorial. So just remember that.
All right. Now, I see the counter. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Yes, I'm Diane Beck, and thank you, Mayor Wilcox, and city staff and city council. I do believe that we are now living in the United States, which is a totalitarian state. They're trying to eliminate every right we have here in America, including mostly, in my case, freedom of speech and also freedom of carry, which is not me, but also freedom of religion. They are trying to, it doesn't matter who's at the top. It is. And there is that saying, pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. And I say, yes, you must absolutely pay attention to that man, because that man is manipulating, and he's trying to buy everyone. And the Lord says, we will buy back. What was being lost is going to be bought back. So I am writing a book. It's in the process. Never sell out, never give up, and never, ever compromise. People think I've sold out. I have not. I'm one of the few that haven't, and I'm telling you the truth, most people, and it's unfortunate, have sold their very soul, and I say it, it's very sad to look at. Nothing can stop what God has ordained, and God has asked me to reach out. I have tried school boards and city council. It takes a lot of guts just to stand up here and have courage to say and stand for Christ, because very few people are in today's society. If you have the chance, look at that Al Pacino clip. It's only eight minutes and 45 seconds, and end justice for all. It's the ending speech. Basically, he basically lays it on the line. But in my case, it's not going to be me, it's going to be the Lord, which will rain justice on this city and state. I am in a spiritual battle of my life, and like Casa and these people, I have been abused at the hands of pedophiles since a very young age. And Al Pacino, not Al Pacino, Charles Stanley, the late, great Dr. Charles Stanley said, of all the things that were stolen from him, the most precious was his Bible. My most precious is my innocence at a very young age, I already said, at the hand of pedophiles. I have very thanks for my friend DJ. She told me the truth, that yes, indeed, this is infiltration at all levels in this state. She saw it coming much earlier than I did. And I do have one last joke and a comment. What do you call fake pasta? Fake spaghetti, impasta? And that is literally what I have in my tracks following me. I know it sounds delusional. It is not. Rodney Chase told me in 1983, I have an imposter, and I have proof, because she can do her hand normal, whoever she is, and she has been following me since the 80s, according to Rodney Chase, who now is no longer with us. Okay? That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. And you too. Antonella Longo. If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, so my name is Antonella Longo. I live around the corner on Horseshoe Drive in Highland Village. I'm here to talk in support of public schools. I saw, it's not starting, but I should be in the...
It's okay.
I saw that in the November 12 minutes of the city council, you had a list of potential legislative issues for the '89 Texas legislative session that started in January. Among the issues that you were ready to support was an increase of the basic allotment for student funding amount for school to keep up with inflation. And of course, if you had that issue in your list, you know that allotment has not changed since 2019. And as you well know, Highland Village Elementary is going to be closed in a couple of months, at the end of the school year. And I have to acknowledge the effort of our mayor, Charlotte Wilcox, that I saw in several locations in support, talking in support of the school. But we know that without funding, school can't survive. So I'm just bringing you back to your commitment to support public school in Highland Village. And so talk to our legislators, and for Highland Village, we know Mitch Liddell for PRC 3152 and 3155, Richard Haynes for 3153, my president, and 3154. They should support a public school, because they make our community better, and they're important for our kids. My kids are in college now, but I want the kid, the other kids growing up in Highland Village to have the same good school that my kids had when they were younger. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, my. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
You're the first one.
What's the last name?
Bustos.
Say it again?
Bustos.
Bustos. Georgiana?
Hi, my name's Georgiana Bustos.
There you go. State your address for the record.
5309 Yeager Drive in the Colony.
Thank you.
And I do want to start by thanking you guys for taking public funding in schools serious. I know you have some... Ooh, I forgot my glasses.
Go run, get it. We won't start your three minutes till you come back. But don't forget, I have that button up here.
Right. So I think most of this is probably more of an education for most people in here, but my packet that I gave you goes into much more detail. So tonight, I want to highlight the urgent threat underfunding public schools poses on our cities, and why city councils must push our legislators to act before it's too late. Our schools are in a crisis, and without action, the impact will ripple through our entire communities. Despite a 26% rise in inflation since 2019, the per-student basic allotment in Texas remains frozen at $6,160. Meanwhile, Texas sits on a $21 billion education surplus, and each year, billions in recapture funds are redirected to our general fund and not our state school fund. Restoring 2019 funding levels would only cost $9.3 billion, a fraction of what's available. Here's what our schools need: An increase in our per-student basic allotment by $1,600 and tied to inflation. Fund schools based on enrollment, not attendance. Ensure all recapture funds go back to education and not the general fund. And reject vouchers that drain public schools of their resources. Because right now, 73% of Texas school districts are underfunded, with 17% operating in a 40% funding gap. Imagine trying to pay your household bills with 40% less. What would your options be? Downsizing? Bankruptcy? This is exactly what our schools are looking at right now. Locally, LISD is deficit 22 million, Denton is 24, Frisco is 31, which is almost $80 million, in our top-three school districts in Texas. Now, Dallas ISD is $186 million deficit. When schools close, or school districts close schools, they are forced to, I'm sorry, when school districts are underfunded, they are forced to close schools, cut jobs, and that destabilizes neighborhoods, reduce academic programs hurting students' outcome, push teachers out, because now 70% of Texas teachers are unsure if they can afford to return. This isn't just about education, it's about our city's future. Underfunded schools lead to lower property values, shrinking the city's tax base, and reducing funding for roads, parks, and essential services. Community reinvestments decline, weakening overall quality of life. Career opportunities shrink, leaving students with fewer paths to success, because industries reinvest in areas with an educated workforce. Small businesses close due to shrinking local economies, and higher crime rates as economic opportunities disappear. We're already seeing the impact. Lewisville ISD has closed five schools. Plano has closed four, and there are more closures coming. Denton has a brand-new school building with no students. Frisco is phasing out the HART program, and districts are moving to a four-day school week. If we don't act now, the cost of fixing this crisis later will be far greater. Because families don't move to a city for the hope of a voucher, they move for great schools, family-friendly communities, and opportunity. I urge each of you to contact your legislators and demand an increase in the basic allotment by $1,600 and tie it to inflation. Our schools and our cities cannot afford to wait another two years. The damage will be irreversible. And I did testify on HB 2 about three weeks ago, and every legislator got the same packet you have. Actually, all 150 House representatives got the same package you have.
Great. Thank you so much.
Can we share this packet?
With anybody you want.
And thank you for going for, it was House Bill 3, and was it 2?
Yeah, I didn't do the voucher.
Oh, you didn't do the voucher one, because I know that one went till like 6:00 in the morning, and that, so... But thank you for coming and letting us know, and thank you for going to the state and engaging. I always encourage people, if you want to do something, if you, you know, hey, I'm going to the state, bring someone with you, because it's a great experience.
I've been up there a couple of times, passing that out, talking to people, but finally, just that all 150 needed, and eventually the Senate will get it too.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to share this.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here, both of you. All right, we are going to move on. We don't have any others. We're going to do the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Council, does anybody want to move anything? Okay, so consent is number 10. Consider approval of minutes. Regular city council meeting held on February 25th, 2025. Number 11, consider resolution 2025-3176, authorizing the purchase of an ambulance from Southern Emergency and Rescue Vehicle Sales through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the local government purchasing cooperative. Number 12, consider resolution 2025-3177, awarding and authorizing an agreement with SRH Landscapes for FM 2499 corridor maintenance services. 13, receive the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And 14, receive budget reports for period ending January 31st, 2025. Council, I will entertain a motion, and you know what? I can't see the button, so somebody...
Uh-oh.
That's going to be, I don't know, if you pushed your button, perfect. Councilman Nelson?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 on the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, and...
I will second.
Mr. Fierenzel will second that, so council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Passes 7-0. Number 15, we did meet and closed session, did not take any action, so we're going to go to number 16. Consider resolution 2025-3178, approving an amended detailed site plan for development of Lot 1, Block A, Highland Village Town Center, Section 1, commonly known as 2270 Justin Road, presently zoned as retail. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. February 22nd, 2022, council approved a detailed site plan for this site to be an HTO development as part of the Highland Village Town Center. At that time, this site was going to be constructed as a franchise facility. A permit was pulled, construction started, they stopped construction, and it's our understanding that the corporate office took over this site. So a new permit has been received for an HTO at this site from a corporate ownership. They did make a few changes. We worked this item with planning and zoning on February 18th, 2025. The changes that were proposed were... Wrong sheet. The building footprint has shrunk from 2553 square feet to 2168 square feet, that's 385 square feet smaller. They added a second drive-through stacking lane along the front of the building. The exterior elevations, the majority of building is going to be white, along with the accent of composite wood on the front elevation. I do have the material board over here on the table, if you want to take a look at it. They added an eight-foot sidewalk in the right-of-way along 407 frontage as part of the comprehensive That's what they added. The site requires 14 parking spaces. The leased square footage of the site includes 33 parking spaces. Highland Village Town Center was planted, I guess, in the late 80s, early 90s, and it had 517 parking spaces in the entire development, which is way overparked for what's currently there now. Matter of fact, we have looked at the site, and the property owner can actually have another leased space in the parking lot area, so it's well overparked. P&amp;Z, we did work this item, as I said, at February 18th, P&amp;Z, a council meeting, or a planning and zoning meeting, they recommended to move it forward to council with a 5-0 vote. And I do have Monica Palmeroy here. She's the director of the Development Services with Interplan, and she's here to represent HTO, if you have any questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes, sir. I can't, don't turn your light on, because I can't see.
I just got a question. We're going to break ground again.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Monica Palmeroy with Interplan, address 220 East Central Parkway in Altamont Springs, Florida. We're going to break ground as soon as you'll let us, so we have the building plans ready to submit this week. So for our permit, so if you have any other questions.
Wait, I think, yeah, Robert, I think had a question.
Yeah, I have a couple. So referencing the signage package, there are directional signs labeled E1 through E4 that say "drive-through." However, it's not clear to me what the purpose of those signs are for, since they're located not where the drive-throughs are, and I don't see that there's any arrows pointing any driver to the drive-through. So what is the purpose of those signs? They're shown on page one of the Titan Sign Company's middle, and then page four is the example of what it looks like.
Is that it's E1?
Yeah, E1 is the one that's by the bottom left, top right, top left, bottom right, so...
Yeah, it's probably a standard sign package. They can add an arrow if needed, but it's right, it's just basically to direct the drivers to the drive-through.
But the way it's oriented, nobody's going to see that as they turn into the site. They're going to see it if they come from the gas station, but there's no arrow on the sign that tells them, go left.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I'll have to get with Titan to revise that. I think they thought that they could drive in there, but they were going to have to, yeah, that one wouldn't make sense.
Yeah, my confusion is somebody in the middle of the night is going to just go straight there.
Yeah.
People these days. Second one. The sidewalk along 407 is an eight-foot, which I appreciate. However, it tapers down to five foot, and then it makes a jog to, let's just call it Plan North. I think it's West, doesn't matter. Maybe it's North. And then it decreases to five feet from eight foot, and then it takes a jog up, but it doesn't align with any island on the other side where it can actually have a straight path across. What's the thinking there?
You're talking about crossing Highland Village Road?
This one right here, no, we're across is on the other side of the gas station. So if I look at that, nothing aligns, and it tapers down to five foot, which seems counterproductive.
I don't think that is, that's outside of the leased area, so we would have to pick that up in our construction project when we do. Actually, Paul mentioned it earlier, that we've met with Half and Associates already for trail alignment along 407.
So why would we have them put it in if we're just going to tear it out? Because to me, that's coming out. That's not, that doesn't align with anything.
Well, it's developer-funded, so we're going to get it put in, and if we can align to it correctly, we'll align to it. If not, we'll have to take a little bit out.
Okay, that's fine. Seems a waste, but that's fine. Dumpster access, not crazy about that. So this is a restaurant. Well, they serve tea. Do they serve food?
No, it's all prepackaged, convenience-style.
Okay, so there's no loose liquids or anything like that being thrown in the dumpster?
I mean, rarely. Most people come in, grab their tea, leave, or they go through the drive-through.
Okay, so my concern is that opens up into the drive aisles. So an employee has to go out into the driveway, if you will, to wheel around any carts, access the dumpster, open those gates, throw it in. There's a potential conflict with traffic there. I would just encourage the city to look at that perhaps. My other concern is, depending on how that is sloped, any liquids that are tossed into that dumpster and leak out of the dumpster are just going to then drain onto the driveway. I mean, it could be greasy, it could be liquid, sticky, whatever, it could cause a mess. If you think of a restaurant and their dumpster enclosures, you know, there's usually a faucet facility or some sort of capture environment to where, you know, those solid waste, I don't want to call it solid waste, but what, you know, the stuff that goes in the dumpster leaks out of it can get cleaned up without it going into the roadway. So Scott, I'd encourage the city to kind of look at that as well.
Like a hose bib or something?
A hose bib, something to wash it down. I don't know what that does if you, because I don't see any inlets there for the water to go into, so if they do hose it down, it's going into the street, which we may not want, right? I guess it's a private drive perhaps, but...
It is.
And then the last question... to where, you know, those solid waste... I don't want to call it solid waste, but what, you know, the stuff that goes in the dumpster, leaks out of it, can get cleaned up without it going into the roadway. So, Scott, I'd encourage the city to kind of look at that as well.
Like a hose bib or something?
A hose bib, something to wash it down. I don't know what that does if you... Because I don't see any inlets there for the water to go into. So, if they do hose it down, it's going into the street, which we may not want, right? I guess it's a private drive perhaps, but...
It is.
And then the last question I had is the fire lane. Are they required to have a fire lane around the building? Or is it just that Northern Drive sufficient?
It meets requirements with the existing fire lane on the north side of the...
So, there's no reason to have a loop around the building for a fire lane?
No, there's fire hydrants along 407. There's fire hydrants internal.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Rhonda?
So, the eight-foot sidewalk is on their property, so it'll be maintained by them?
It'll be dedicated as infrastructure.
So, it'll be in an easement?
Yes, there's an easement in there.
Oh, there's a pedestrian easement there?
Well, there's a 20-foot utility easement in there.
Wouldn't we need...
We could get a separate instrument.
Yeah.
Good catch.
So, and I guess this is the next question. A, yes, if that could be put in an easement, we know who takes care of it. But I guess during our 407 project, the city will be obviously acquiring more easements?
That hasn't been determined yet.
Okay, well, the placement here, I guess, you're going to have to do something.
We also have the TechDOT right-of-way to encroach into as well.
That's it? Just make it clear who has to take care of the pavement or the sidewalk?
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions, Council? Okay.
I do have one about the landscaping plan, if we can. You've put in place quite an extensive array of trees and bushes, which I appreciate. Thank you. My concern is not that they're going in, but my concern is for the long-term viability of these, especially here in Texas with the heat and the cold. We get a lot of loss due to both those extremes. What is the plan to maintain that and replace that in the years to come? And if this was eventually sold off from corporate, what's to keep it in place beyond that?
No, that's a great question. Being a corporate location, they're committed to, you know, maintaining that. And even if it does get sold off to a franchise partner, corporate is heavily involved with all their franchise partners. So, they ensure that the brand standards of HTR are held. So, they will be... If you guys pose a concern about it, you contact corporate, and they will make sure that it gets taken care of.
Are there clauses in the contract that survive the sale to maintain it? And is there anything on our side that would enforce the maintenance and replacement?
I'm going to defer to Kevin on that, but I think approving this site plan approves this landscape plan.
Correct.
What's the enforcement mechanism?
Well, the mechanism is typically in our landscape ordinance itself that if you've got approved landscaping, I need to double-check that. Ralph Quinn, because I have one anticipation of that question. Generally, once it's in, it's in. They've got to maintain it as in accordance with the site plan.
That would be true of all the developments then, right?
Should be true of all the developments, but some of the developments may predate some of our ordinances.
And that is my concern. I want to make sure that you're spending a lot of money for the landscaping, and I would hate to see that in five years, it's all died and not being replaced, right? That becomes an eyesore for everyone along 407 in this community, and we don't want that for you, and I'm sure you don't want it for your presentation as well. So, what do we have that's going to survive any sale or any death of a plant?
Is it in the ordinance, the resolution?
I think Kevin's looking.
Can we add it to the site plan? That ties it to them? I mean...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir, what you mean?
Just add that approval of the site plan that they must maintain whatever runs with the land?
Yeah, let's see.
What is the penalty, though? If I don't replace it, what do you do to me?
Let me ask a court. If you're in a PD, which is an ordinance, there's a fine that's associated with that ordinance.
Is it a big fine? I mean, I'm asking, I'm not trying to be... I'm asking because you have to choose. Do... I mean, if it's a $10 fine, well, I'm not going to do it. If it's a $20,000 fine, I might... That's why I'm not trying to be a smart aleck.
Well, it's no... It's going to be no more than a $2,000 fine at most, as would be typical of other zoning ordinances. You know, $2,000 per day per violation.
Per day, okay.
Per day.
That's...
Which, of course, typically municipal courts will not do the actual $2,000 per day.
Oh, no. But it has my...
It has... It can have some effect, yeah. It can have some real dollar impact, sure.
Are we waiting on Kevin?
Hang on a second.
I believe we're waiting on Kevin.
Okay.
No, I think...
I'm sorry.
You know, typically, I mean, if it's a requirement for the site plan, it's a requirement to be maintained. So, once it's part of the site plan, they have to keep the landscaping as it was approved. So, as things die out, you have to replace them in order to continue to comply with the site plan.
Okay, so with that then, we have teeth in the event that in seven years this dies. We can go back and say, "This is what we've approved. We need you to replace this."
That's typically the manner in which we enforce it, yes.
Okay. Okay, so as long as we have some type of enforcement mechanism that we can keep these plants in the future, whether or not HTO owns this building or not, which would be the question, right?
Right. Yeah, the site plan is not for the business. The site plan is for...
That site.
That site.
Exactly. Okay, so then it becomes our onus to enforce it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Robert had a couple more questions.
Yeah, sorry. On the landscape plan, Councilman Fiorenza reminded me of a couple of questions. On the landscape plan, there is a hatched line that kind of runs around this whole drawing in the pavement areas, and it's hard to describe. But if you look at the parking stalls, it kind of shows the extent of the parking stalls, and it cuts in and cuts out. I don't know. This is really going to help you identify it, but areas like this square, this square, this rectangle on here. Do you see that hatch, Scott?
The jig-jaggy one?
What's it?
Is it the jig-jaggy hatch?
No, not the ground cover one, the one in the paved area. It's just not on the legend, and I'm just curious what that is.
Like the triangle on the right-hand side?
It could be from the site plan. Landscape plans are graded from the site plan, so it's called out on the site plan.
It didn't seem to align, and I don't have a grading plan to bounce it off of. I was just curious if we knew what that was. And then while you're looking that up, the Bermuda grass, is that planned to be sawed or seeded?
I would think sawed. I can confirm that for you.
And then the last question. It looks like a saw cut line, but I don't hold me to it. But it doesn't seem to... It may be almost a construction saw cut line, but... Or a key joint perhaps. Shoot, last question. The landscape buffer along 407, they have a berm planned, which is great. Is there any concern of adding a berm on top of all the utilities that are running in that area? Are we concerned about that at all? Should we be?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's not that much weight.
Okay. So, we can review these plans later, that's fine. Nothing to hold us up for that. But I was just curious what we're approving, landscape plan.
And Mayor, just while we were having that discussion, I did finally find the section to the zoning ordinance that talks about landscape maintenance. It does require with respect to non-residential family, multifamily zoning districts that particularly... And I mean, there's a lot more details to this, but it says, "All plant materials shall be maintained in health and growing condition as appropriate to the season of the year. Plant materials which die shall be replaced with plant material of similar variety and size within 90 days." So, and then there's, again, there's several other stipulations regarding maintenance and replacement of landscaping. So, we do have a separate section in the zoning ordinance itself that does address that.
Code enforcement is, by the way, going through that process right now with several locations in Highland Village.
Is that aligned just to that PD, or is that standard ordinance?
That's a general provision related to landscaping.
Do you have another question?
So, when they have to get to the utilities, who has to pay for the plants? When they dig up the lines, who pays for the plants?
Depends on whose easement it is and what the easement document says. Typically, if you plant something in an easement, and you haven't put that on the utility, and the utility owns the easement, the utility, the owner of the fee burdened by the easement gets to replace it, unless they've got a different deal or policy with the utility. It just kind of depends.
Yeah, I just wanted to, since there are so many utilities just laid out there that more than likely, not that anything would happen, but when they go digging, you're going to go planting, more than likely.
Anything in an easement that's not called out
Yeah.
in the eas... As a special case in the easement is there at risk.
Yeah, and so, as you know, Councilmember Hurst, you know, sometimes easements will actually, you know, the grantor will actually reserve the right to place landscaping that are in it. So, it kind of depends on what the easement actually says.
Mr. Feaster, it appears that this jagged line you're questioning is what they cut out.
So, there is some existing concrete there that they're going to review? Okay. That's... I arrived at that just now, so I'm correct.
And the Bermuda grass is sawed.
It is sawed, very good.
It's listed on the plant schedule.
Sawed, okay. Thank you. Oh, you got to turn the page, yeah? Sure enough.
There it is. Look at there. Anybody else have any questions?
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution... No, we approve resolution 2025-3178, approving the amended detailed site plan for development of Lot 1, Block A, Highland Village Town Center.
A second.
We have a second. Mr. Feaster seconded. All right, Council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie, 7-0.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Shovel and dirt. Quickly. Okay. Oh, and it's Scott Kristin's show tonight. Number 17, consider resolution 2025-3179, authorizing an agreement with Maldonado Burket LLP for professional traffic engineering services related to a study of school traffic pattern changes. Who is this company again?
Malado Burket.
Maladon, okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. With the recent announcement from LASD in Lewisville Independent School District Board, they approved, everybody knows they approved, the closing of Highland Village Elementary. So, with that, we'd like to take a comprehensive look at where these displaced students are going to be rerouted to the two existing elementary schools that are in Highland Village that they're going to be attending, that being McAuliffe Elementary and Heritage Elementary. This takes into consideration the entire Highland Village Elementary zone, so it does push into Lewisville a little bit. I believe it stops at Garden Ridge to go to this Highland Village Elementary School. So, we'll take a look at that population and then get with LASD and get with Town of Flower Mound and look at all the different routes that buses could take, the parents could take for dropping off. And they'll give us a comprehensive plan or a comprehensive report with, possibly with recommendations for any city infrastructure that might be in need of upgrade for the additional traffic, as well as, you know, Flower Mound may be a recommendation for signal timing during the school hours and so on and so forth.
How much?
It's 57,115.
And who requested the study?
We just took it on ourselves as...
I mean, we've had studies. There's 347 kids moving.
Right.
And there's very few ways to get to Briar or McAuliffe. You've got to go down Highland Shores Boulevard in Briar Hill. So, I'm sure that, you know, there's bus studies that are done by LASD as far as rerouting kids that are going to be transferred. So, you know, my question is, spending $57,000 for something that we intuitively know seems like an overkill because we're not going to change anything at 407 and Barnett. That's what it feels like, is a rehash of that that we've studied and studied. So...
Will this take into consideration a possible light at Barnett and 407? Looking at that, I mean...
They'll look at traffic counts there, proposed traffic counts. Would it recommend a light? I don't know.
We understand that that's TechDOT, and we've requested that many years. But it's very comprehensive. So, it's not just Barnett and that. It's going to be the whole thing. And I think that, while, yeah, you're correct, $57,000, there are a lot of parents and residents in Highland Village that have asked about the traffic study.
I don't disagree, but I don't know what a study is going to do, whether we add a traffic light at Brazos and Highland Shores Boulevard. We've already got one. We've got traffic lights down there. You know, there's going to be 347 kids moving, okay? Again, I think there's probably better ways we could send $57,000. I guess it's probably rhetorical that we can't assume that LASD would be helping to pay for any of this.
That's what I heard. I heard they were providing, that they've thought this through. They have that information.
They should have.
So, why are we paying for this when we didn't do this?
We've had discussions with the school district. And of course, they will provide some bus route information and things like that. But beyond that, I don't... They really were hoping that we were going to do something like this to take a look. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I see. Well, and...
It did, of course. It came up in conversation when the deliberations were going on about the school closures, about the concerns of what it would do with traffic to these two schools.
But, you know, the barn door is open, so the study now...
It will be what it will be.
I mean, there's one way in and out to Heritage. That's it. One way in and out. We're redoing Highland Shores Boulevard already. So, I'm with Councilmember Kix Miller. This is, why are we spending this money for a problem we didn't cause? We're not changing our road patterns. We're not widening our roads. We're, you know, and quite frankly, when the school buses run and all, they're going to figure out, and the school district will say, "Hey, we need help here." So, again, their problem, they're asking us to foot their bill.
Does this negatively affect... I had made a request a few months ago about the speed limit on 407 and then the extension of the school zone. Is this traffic study required to request that extension of that school zone? Or can we put in a request to extend the school zone and then reduce the speed limit without the study? Because to me, that's not changing traffic patterns. That's just enforcing and extending the school zone.
Are you asking to reduce the already 30 to below that?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a state highway thing. And according to TechDOT District Engineer, they'll go out and actually do that, and you can work with them without a $57,000 study to extend your school zone.
Correct, which was... My only concern was the amount of cars currently pushing because there will be, half will go on Highland Shores, the other half will go 407, increasing the traffic that is already getting into Briar Hill both ways. So, if the study isn't required to request an extension of a school zone and a speed limit drop in that school zone, which helps getting people out of the Barnett-407 exchange, then that should just be the request.
We can request that at TechDOT.
Okay.
But you can do that without the study.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, worst case, you're going to add 200 kids a day, which is what's going to Heritage, on to Barnett, okay? Number of those will go on bus. You know, I would imagine probably half of them maybe. But we've already studied that. So, you know, 7:30 to 8:30, it's going to be busier, and other than that, it's going to be normal, so.
And we just pulled off traffic from one place and put it to another place, so it's the same amount of traffic. If you've seen the car line at Highland Village Elementary, same amount of traffic. Just, you're just moving it somewhere else. And we're not, we never studied those streets for our schools.
So, is it my understanding, school districts don't do traffic studies? Is that my understanding?
I wouldn't say that. I think sometimes, depending on school zones and things, they may do traffic studies.
They have to do their bus line.
I've been involved with schools that have done traffic studies. Not, I'm not, I mean, school districts, it's not outside. But they told the parents this was taken care of. That's why I'm a little, why are we doing it? They made a promise that we need to cash their check, or their check, not your check. That's what bothers me.
Not sure I understand that.
I think they've informed the city.
Yeah, I confuse myself.
Yeah, that hasn't been my conversation with the school district. That hasn't been my conversation with the school district.
Have they informed me or...
That's what some of the parents have said, that they have it all worked out, the buses, how, they're going to have all the parents, when the buses get worked out, they're going to let the parents know and all of that stuff. I'm not saying it's been, but from the parents I've spoken, maybe Cox can tell more, but the parents I spoke with is that that's all the school district's giving them, the information that it's going to be provided. So I would assume if they're going to be providing it, wouldn't they've already been studying it? I don't know. Is that what you've been told?
All I heard was everything was worked out.
Yeah, that's what...
When was the last traffic study done at Barnett?
Two years ago, maybe.
Not that long ago.
First time when the Magnolia development came through.
So we can assume that...
But an official TechDOT 1 has never, has, I don't think it's been, an official TechDOT 1 has been done for that intersection and how long ago?
Two years.
Okay.
October.
And according to that report, another 10,000 cars a day would need to come down 407 in order to get that stoplight. Keep going?
I haven't opened that report in...
There is capacity of 10,000, but there are so many different factors for traffic . And of course, the spacing is very close to another single.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to see if a request go in, I think the extending the school zone considering two roads, the two main roads connecting all three schools that we have currently, see the school zone extended and then see that 407 speed limit drop. I think that would help the Barnett traffic and the new cars coming in and out of that. It definitely gives them more time and a little bit more, I guess, room, less or more room for error in case anybody wants to make a quick left or a quick right out of there. But I think that would be a good box to check first. And then if for whatever reason our school population increases tenfold over the next five years, then we can come back and revisit.
Well, and have we had conversations with the school? Don't they have a gate on Heritage that they don't, on the other side that they don't open and nobody can come in? I mean, again, wanting the city to pay for things, but have we had any serious conversations? Because I think that in itself will help a lot of the traffic off of Barnett. Has that conversation happened with LASD?
We've had that conversation many times to open that gate and...
But since they've closed Highland Village Elementary, have we had that conversation?
No.
Maybe we should because since we're now shoving kids all the way across the city, again, I don't know what their reasoning is, but we're already paying for the crossing guard, so why can't we stick one there? It's cheaper than $57,000 for a study.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Simple. What are you looking for on a study like this? What is your primary goal?
My primary goal was to try to thwart any traffic concerns when...
There's not a problem you're really trying to solve, really.
Well, come August.
Right. There will be. You're trying to anticipate a problem and trying to shortcut it if you can, right? So if, whatever, if you did the study, whatever information comes out of there, what are we going to do with it? We know we have only a certain number of roads going into that school. We know what the school district's position is on the gate thus far. We know what their position is on busing. We know what the state's position is. So what is it going to get us doing a study right now?
Right now, to give us just some anticipated figures and possibly a CIP that might or might not be funded.
What, though?
City infrastructure improvements. They might see something at this intersection here that needs to be improved, depending on what they anticipate traffic going down Highland Shores Boulevard. Does that, you know, would they, would they recommend widening the cross section of that? I don't know. Adding, you know, a small amount of traffic on 407, start petitioning TechDOT to do something, although 407 is in a, is in a landlocked 90-foot right away, you know, that's going to be...
Essentially, Highland Village Road is as well.
Yeah.
There's really nothing to do.
There's nothing, exactly.
There's nothing we can do other than request the city, I mean, request LASD, open your gate during that. I mean, maybe it's too much work to unlock and lock twice a day, I don't know. And to have the school district communicate effectively with the parents, saying, like, the students have been told, it's been taken care of, we're going to provide you the information. I'd love to see a copy of it.
We would like to see a copy of it, too.
Yeah, well, they seem to be taking care of. I know that they're working on their bus patterns and the bus route, so that may be what they're talking about.
They have to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd rather see the money put towards rewidening the Highland Shores Boulevard or putting in automated crossing down by DKH or adding a little frontage on DK so that becomes less of a choke point on Briar Hill, okay? So I think there's things that we can do with that money.
But would that stuff show up in this?
We've already got that information. No, we've already got that information. Scott's looked at that for years.
Traffic mobility studies showed all that. It is, that project's in design.
Yeah, there's things that we can do. Or buy a new digger, okay?
I certainly do understand the reluctance because I don't think Scott and I either one thought that it was going to cost $57,000 to do an analysis like this. If we do wait, we can certainly wait and see what some of those traffic patterns are. And if there are some real issues that are developing, we could address them at that point.
Traffic patterns that come from the school district and redesigning their bus traffic?
Yeah.
In August.
Do we know, have we, have we considered or looked at or asked how many of these people, their children will be using mobility devices to go on the trails to get to the schools? How many will walk? Are all of them being bused or driven? I'm sure there's a percentage, probably a small percentage, that will use other devices, which I think is another concern that we have to think about. People walking or on these devices. And have we looked at the intersections that they're going to have to cross and the safety of those intersections? I think that's something that we need to look at, too.
That would be part of this study, pedestrian crossing. But we could pose that question to LASD.
Okay.
Because these are elementary kids, so, I mean, they're under 10. Are they supposed to be zipping around in the scooter?
Well, they do.
They will.
I understand they do. And I know it's a bigger deal at the middle school, but this is, this is an elementary school. But hey, wait, all of Highland Village goes to Briar Hill, right? And we've got mobility devices, so we should already have data on who's going and what crossings they're using because they're all, everybody from the Lewisville-Hland Village East Side already, they're already zipping over there in their devices. So we should have some, we should be able to look at patterns.
You'll have some, but you're not going to have the elementary students.
No, no, but you'll see where they're going, like where they're crossing. You're going to know where they're already crossing.
You'll have some information.
Yeah. I just...
Have there been any concerns or conversations with the Bowery with anticipated traffic cutting through the apartments there to get to Aladdin Briar Hill instead of making a left onto 407?
Not current.
But would that also be...
Years ago, yes.
I don't think you can make a left on 407 during school hours. During, you can't make a left.
On Main Street.
But other times, you can make a left.
Yes, I'm saying, but during school hours, they can't make a left on 407.
But you have to realize, there's going to be 25 houses that are going to be built there.
Oh, I know.
Right? So it's not just the school time. I mean, there's going to be an increase in traffic. You could have people, you've got more kids going there. You're going to have parents coming non-school zone hours.
But again, what can we change with 407?
The TechDOT study that was done, when they made their recommendation for non-signalization, did they provide information on the traffic count that would be necessary to meet the requirement? How many cars on Barnett? How many would have to be on 407?
That calculation would be in the tables in the Ashtoe.
You can break, project it out using their tables, is what you're saying. Okay.
Can we get a copy of that report?
Okay, council, well, I think, well, we have this on the agenda. We need to take a vote on it or...
Or just not call for a motion.
All right, well, maybe I just don't get a motion if I call for one.
Okay, I'm not going to make a motion.
Well, should, should we consider tabling to a date?
I was going to suggest either deny it or move to table it. And I would just not table it to a specific date. Just go ahead and table, table the matter.
Yeah, my thing would be getting the information from the schools, from the buses, then making a determination on whether or not this is really going to be a justified cost or not.
And, and TechDOT.
Yes.
The information with the schools on the buses and TechDOT and then, so, I mean, I...
And that would all be part of a study like this. They, that's, that's what they would do, is take all the information that they can get to, to evaluate.
But it's like we're doing it twice.
So they would ask for all that information.
We don't have to...
From LASD.
Yeah, and from LASD.
From LASD, from Flower Mound, from Lewisville.
We have two board members that live in Highland Village. We, they should be a little more forth, I mean, we should work with them. If they're, we're trying to work with them to solve this, to work on this transition. The gate discussion should, should happen soon. We should see where their bus patterns are. I mean, we've got two of the seven members live in a little bitty city of 16,000. We should be able to work with them to figure this out without spending $57,000.
I think that we should probably table this, see if we can gather that information, all the information that's been discussed, and then make a determination. If, that's my, just my opinion.
Sorry, just jump in here. If we table it, aren't we just expecting Maldonado-Burquette to hold that price firm while it's tabled? Because if we bring it back within a couple of months and the price has changed and the contractor's changed, there's no point in tabling it, right? I mean...
Typically, we ask them to hold pricing for 30 days, so if it's more than 30 days.
Yeah, so we're tabling something that's going to probably have to change anyways, price or provider. I, you know, I don't know.
And would the, would the parameters of the study change if we have more data for them to work with? Because it sounds like this is a from scratch thing. I mean, if there's already something done, say, there's something done, TechDOT does it or the school district does it, that's a different conversation to an addendum to something that's already been done versus starting from scratch.
When were they to have finished the study? Start, finish?
End of May.
End of May?
End of May, 25.
So the study, we don't know really what it is until the actual traffic starts.
Right. They're making a lot of assumptions.
So maybe next May, we'd have a traffic of kids moving and cars trafficking, and we could put our own traffic counters out there. We know what traffic is today on Highland Shores Boulevard. We could count it as we go through the school year without paying $57,000.
I'd be curious if the school district has surveyed the parents to see what their mode of transportation is going to be. That's...
But if we move this to a motion and it fails, there's no reason it can't come back in a future day.
Correct.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, in fact, as I'm sitting here thinking, just from a procedural standpoint, it'd probably be easier just to go ahead and recommend denial of the resolution. Because when you table something, technically, you're supposed to then have a motion to remove it from the table to act on again. That way, we don't have to go through that procedural hurdle the next time this comes up. At some point, it comes back on the agenda. We can just discuss it.
The school district's traffic studies may give us light on a lot of different things when that comes out, if we can get a copy of it. And it may be May, it may be August. We don't know that yet. Okay?
All right.
I do think the information is important. I really do. I know that John says there's 300, 300 kids, but that's 300 kids that are going to be funneled into totally different schools that, and different traffic patterns. So I think the information...
There's only two ways to get there.
But unfortunately, two of the roads are the same roads going to both the schools. So you, you're going to have all of them going on Briar Hill for the most part.
But it's almost, I agree with both of you, but we're duplic, it sounds like we're duplicating work that the school district says they're doing.
Should be doing.
Should be. I understand that. And there, I wish there was, but we're getting, I think we're getting the horse way ahead of the cart.
I don't have a problem being proactive, but I think it's a little bit advanced.
Currently entertain a motion at this point. If you're turning on your lights, I can't see them. So raise your hand or something.
If, like I said, we're going to, obviously, I think it's going, it's going, not going to go any farther, but I would like to see what we can do from a gathering information standpoint and also, like I mentioned before, the free things that we can do through TechDOT or through request to kind of push this through. Now, we are running out of time. August 13th is around the corner. And so it's just something that we're going to probably have to be very proactive on and probably push the district for as well in that fact. But that's it.
Hurt it there.
So...
I will just say, regardless of this study or no study, I, it is going to be widespread panic that first week of school. That's just something they're going to have to work through and get accustomed to. And then, of course, things always seem to level out a little bit. People adjust appropriately and it works out. But I think it would be best if y'all aren't ready to do it now to go ahead and deny it. And we may bring something back different after we see some of those patterns when, when school does start.
Has the chief of police reached out to the school to start trying to get information and planning for that event?
You know, I cannot speak for the police department. I'm not sure if they've had any of those conversations or not.
I think it's something...
I know, they, they have regular conversations, so...
Yeah, I'm sure they're going to, but I'd like to, I'd like to know that something good comes out of that, too.
Yeah. Certainly have to be heavily watched that first week or two to see how things are going and see if people need assistance there, for sure.
Can you reach out to Dr. Rapp and see what, what they've done? Get some, some of these reports or...
Yeah, and I really think talking to Dr. Rapp in the past was the information with regard to the bus routes and how the bus routes were going to work is what they were working on.
That's it.
Yeah.
And the gate, can someone please talk to the school district about the gate? Because there's a, it would illuminate some of the traffic.
The problem is it dumps into a residential neighborhood. It's a very short street that goes right in.
And a very small, you can't dump...
Yeah, it's a very small cut through. I know, I know the people in Tartan would not be happy about that. And I'm not sure how best it would feed in when you're coming on that backside with the other traffic.
Well, I'm thinking more of the kids on, the walking kids, the scooter kids. They can't get through there.
No, they can't. There's a sidewalk pass.
They can? Okay.
Yeah.
Pedestrian traffic.
All the cars drop off there.
They do.
See, that was my, is if they're going to drop off there.
There's city trails all the way to Heritage now, so they can hop on a scooter and get there. So, so do you want us to vote and vote down or do you want us to table?
Raise your hand.
I can see the light flash.
Somebody tell me. Look, watch this.
There're going to be golf carts that we're going to have to be worried about.
Tell him, Feaster.
I was going to ask, I'm going to drive on the sidewalk this week.
Is there going to be an influx of golf carts coming from the east side now?
There might be.
I can't get out of those neighborhoods. We've already talked about that.
We're going to have to have enforcement on those scooters.
Yes.
You're going to have to have enforcement on the scooters. Those things scare the life out of me. Okay. I think Mr. Feaster would like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-3171 authorizing an agreement with Maldonado-Burquette for professional traffic engineering services relating to the study of school traffic pattern changes.
And if we don't get a second?
Would you suggest you make a second?
If we don't get a second.
And then vote against the motion.
Okay.
If we don't get a second, it dies.
Then it dies.
Well, I'd rather...
You'd rather have it?
I think for the purpose of the minutes, let's have, have some disposition of the item.
Let's filibuster this all.
That's right.
We don't have phone books to read anymore, so...
Okay, well, so we have a motion and a second, council, further discussion?
Who seconded it?
Sorry.
Kevin Cox.
I did.
Councilman Cox. Yes. I know, this, this is probably going to be an issue.
You're going to have to have that light removed.
I'm going to have to have it in the flat.
Oh, we need one of those rounded mirrors so you can see your lights.
$57,000.
Okay, all right. It could be part of the study.
Yeah.
Vote for it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, nay, nay.
Whoa, timeout. You made a motion, but you voted, okay.
Yes.
I can vote against my own motion.
You can vote against your own motion, perfect.
With prejudice.
With prejudice.
It was.
It was 7-0.
Yep.
7-0.
Can we make a motion to deny and then do it opposite?
I was always...
Yeah, I know, but could we make a motion if we knew that, could we make it?
My...
I'm just asking.
You know, my recommendation is always to make a motion in the affirmative because if you then vote against it on a negative motion, then you have a double negative and it gets real confusing as to what you voted for.
Eight years ago, I listened.
To Kevin. And that's, you learned that, okay.
Seven, seven years ago.
Okay, wow, wow, okay. We're going to move right along now.
Yes, please.
Moving right along. They tell me that I say that all the time. People back there say, you say that all the time. Moving right along. I didn't realize that. Number 18... Number 18, status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. How about a traffic study?
Nope.
I can read the statement about water disinfection if you like.
No, I want...
Just one quick, since we were talking about magnolia, do we have any updates? I know it's been probably at least a year, or probably longer.
It's been six months at least.
They have submitted plans, I believe, Scott, we had given them comments and... For magnolia.
And the reason I'm asking is, obviously, as this traffic is going to increase, are they planning on breaking ground at the same time that we're going to be sending more kids to this school?
Yes.
My concern is the construction.
We have received a preliminary plat for review, and we've made comments. We haven't accepted any payments yet, so once we, once they address our comments, they'll submit a preliminary plat with payment that we'll take forward to planning and zoning, and then bring it to Council.
And with regard to the temple...
Probably within the next two months.
And, sorry, and with regard to the temple, I know they're currently doing construction. When are they planning to be done? Do we know?
Who's under construction?
The temple?
Temple? I have no idea what their schedule is.
I mean, they've done a lot of dirt work, and they've taken the house down, and...
I was just curious on how that's going to, or whether it's going to overlap with the start of school as well?
Yeah, their, their utility guy is, is preparing to move in, and the way they have their construction going is as they can afford it, they do a little bit, and then when they can afford a little more, they do a little more.
And remind me, when that's done, there's going to be a sidewalk all the way down on the east side, correct? So, because right now, kids would have to go into the street. If they're coming from the apartments, they have to go in the street.
There'd be a sidewalk along the east side, yes.
Okay.
But it dead ends at the grass of the LISD property.
And of course...
They would want us to pay for that sidewalk, too?
$57,000.
$57,000 for that sidewalk?
This is a question, is there a time limit on how long that construction project be underway?
As long as they, as long as they have an inspection within every six months, it's a good permit.
Keeps permit active.
For a future agenda, can we discuss having a ordinance or something that limits the construction activ, or vehicles entering the road during school hours on Barnett? Because those truck guys, they got deliveries to make and they don't care. So is that something we can discuss between now and then, to have something that keeps the construction trucks out of, off Barnett during school zone hours?
We, we do discuss that in our pre-construction meetings, and we...
Yeah, but...
We tell them that there's no road closures, no deliveries during the, the drop off and pickup time. Do they comply every time? No, but most of the time they do.
Well, I think we need, in this instance, maybe we need something a little stronger than just our pre-con. I mean, this is a big deal. This is, not only are these kids having a big change, right? Right in the midst of dirt trucks and dump trucks and every, whatever kind of construction vehicle, I, I think we should maybe look at something a little more hard and say, and, and they need to be, I mean, called out on it, to be honest.
We have money allocated this year to look at PDs and ordinances and some...
Well, this wouldn't be that, this would just be a, for Barnett only, I mean...
We, we can include it in there.
Construction time, if they can, can't start during school hours until 9 o'clock or what, you know? Delay construction, they have to be finished.
Just vehicle, the construction's not an issue, it's just vehicles entering, the construction, the concrete, when are they pouring their concrete? When are they, if they're just on their site, but that's a simple two paragraph ordinance saying, on this road, on Barnett, no construct, you know, trucks entered during this and that. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I would think.
I wanted to get quick, we can get Kevin to start drafting something.
All right, Council, does anybody else have anything?
Kevin will have it ready next week.
I do.
I'm sorry, yes.
I really do think we need to look at enforcement of the scooter. I, I, I mean, the kids are younger, they're not wearing helmets, sometimes two kids are on a scooter, and I know we're the nicest, friendly, we do community policing, but the time is done. We need to move on, and there needs to be some type of, you know, something, but these kids are, it's dangerous. I mean, and they're going, they're on Highland Village Road, they don't know the rules, they're not wearing their helmets, and at some point in time, enough's enough. And it's kind of like the whole, when you're driving behind a pickup truck and there's a dog that might fly out of the back of it, I feel the same way with these scooters zigging